So Chag Sameach, everybody. The main feature of Shavuot is the commemoration of the giving of the Torah and the revelation of God at Mount Sinai theoretically 3,000 years ago. And so the date of Shavuot is connected specifically to that event that we'll read about in the from the Torah tomorrow, from the 19th and 20th chapters of Exodus, where it says, in the third month, they reached Mount Sinai, the third month after the Exodus from Egypt. So Exodus from Egypt happened in Nisan. That's the 15th of Nisan is Passover, and then the month of Eir is next. And now that we're in the month of Sivan. So the rabbis connected it with counting the omair, seven weeks, et cetera, to leading up to that spiritual event. So we have the historical miracle of the Exodus leading to the spiritual miracle of the giving of the Torah at Mount Sinai. So the tradition arose centuries ago to stay up all night to kind of spiritually relive that experience by studying Torah, Torah in air quotes like that, because it's not just the five books of Moses, but anything related to Torah would be appropriate to study. So I wanted to share tonight something that I learned at a session of the Washington Board of Rabbis last month. So I'm going to share my screen, which will mean that we're not going to be able to see everybody anymore. We'll be able to see just a few of us, but just trust me that we're still there. And no matter how your iPad or your laptop or your phone has it, you'll either just be able to see me or might be able to see a few other people. But hopefully you see this as well. So this is a source sheet, a couple pages that I got from, like I said, from this study session that I had at the Washington Board of Rabbis, the first time we met in person since COVID two years ago. So Rabbi Avi Strausberg, a woman, is the director of the Hadar Institute in Washington DC. Hadar is one of these new, non-denominational study organizations. Another one is Hartman, which I've taken part in by going to Israel to have classes, and there are Hartman classes offered here in America as well. So Hartman and Hadar are two of these organizations, especially in light of COVID, that I've really taken off by offering classes on Zoom, et cetera. So Hadar offers brilliant material. And this is an interesting midrash. I titled it Leaving the Ark, A COVID Midrash. Rabbi Strausberg titled it From Flood to Rainbow, Stepping Out Into the Unknown. So she presented this as an opportunity. And I like to ask people to stay on mute. It's kind of harder for me now with sharing the screen to mute everybody. But please be sure that you're muted unless you want to ask a question or make a comment, then feel free to unmute and just interrupt at that point. But she presented this as a way to try to come to terms in some way, spiritually, academically, Jewishly, with how we're dealing with COVID. And that and the fits and starts to when it was okay, after we're vaccinated, after we're boosted, to try to go out in public again and to have things with family and friends and community again, and then stepping back and then being able to do it again, and then having to step back, et cetera, this back and forth. Do we wear a mask? Do we not wear a mask? All of these fits and starts to how we're coping with COVID and the effect then also that this has had on our mental health and our spiritual well-being. So she uses the story of Noah and the flood as this, as a stepping off point for this. So the flood, how many, how long was the flood supposed to be according to the Torah? How long did God say that the flood was going to be? Anybody?
Forty days and forty nights?
Forty days and forty nights, exactly. That's what we learn in chapter seven of Genesis. God said to Moses, build this ark. I'm going to bring rain, devastating flood, wipe out all of humanity and creation, forty days and forty nights. Okay? So that's how long you think it's going to be. Then chapter eight begins this way. God remembered Noah and all the beasts and all the cattle that were with him in the ark. And God caused a wind to blow across the earth, and the waters subsided. The fountains of the deep and the floodgates of the sky were stopped, and the rain from the sky was held back. The waters receded steadily from the earth. At the end of 150 days, the waters diminished. Now wait a second. We just said the flood was going to be forty days. So they're in the ark, cooped up, forty days. But they're still in the ark, and now we say, we see, it's 150 days. So where's this extra 110 days coming from? Right? Forty days has turned into 150 days. The waters diminished so that in the seventh month, on the 17th day of the month, the ark came to rest on the mountains of Ararat. Doesn't matter where the mountains of Ararat are. What matters is Noah was told by God forty days and forty nights. It stretches into 150 days, and the ark comes to rest. The waters went on diminishing until the 10th month. Now wait a second. This is the seventh month, on the 17th day of the month, that the ark comes to rest on Ararat. But they're not getting out yet. It's another three months. The 10th month, on the first of the month, the tops of the mountains became visible. So the ark has come to rest, but they can't see any land. So they're being tempted. Water, the rain has stopped. The floodwaters are receding. But they can't get out of the ark yet. So it's forty days to 150 days, and then another two and a half months until they finally see the tops of the mountains. At the end of forty days, forty more days. Forty more days, forty days to 150 days to the top of the mountain, another two and a half months. And now another forty days after that, Noah opened the window of the ark that he had made and sent out the raven. It went to and fro until the waters had dried up from the earth. Then he sent out the dove to see whether the waters had decreased on the surface of the ground. What happened to the raven? He sent out the raven to go to and fro until the waters had dried up. But what happened to the raven? Raven didn't come back. Keep that in mind, what happened to the raven as we go on. So then the raven doesn't come back. He sent out the dove to see whether the waters had decreased on the surface of the ground. But the dove could not find a resting place for its foot and returned to him to the ark, for there was water over all the earth. So putting out his hand, he took it into the ark with him. So it's still not safe to go out. The raven goes out, doesn't come back. Dove goes out, comes back, because there's no resting place for the dove yet. He waited another seven days. Okay, we don't know how long between the raven and the dove. Dove goes out, doesn't find a resting place, another week. And then he sent out the dove from the ark. The dove came back to him toward evening, and there in its bill was a plucked olive leaf or an olive branch. It says here, aleh zait taraf befiyah. And aleh is a leaf, could be a branch. You know, it's the symbol of the peace, of the olive, of the dove with the olive branch in its mouth, comes from here. Then Noah knew that the waters had decreased on the earth. Okay, so dove comes back with an olive branch, seven days after he had sent it out the first time. And now he waited another seven days and sent the dove forth, and it did not return to him anymore. In the 601st year, in the first month, on the first of the month, the waters began to dry from the earth. And when Noah removed the covering of the ark, he saw that the surface of the ground was drying. And in the second month, on the 27th day of the month, the earth was dry. So all these fits and starts, which we don't really pay that much attention to when we read Noah every year on Shabbat, when it's that Shabbat, we just go through the story. But spending the time with it as we are now, we see it's just like COVID. Is it safe to go out? Wait a little bit more. Is it safe? Well, let's do this test. Ah, not so sure. Stay back in the house. Come restrict our activities. It's it sends out the raven, sends out the dove, sends out the dove again, takes off the cover, stays a while. It's a couple more months until it's absolutely safe for everyone to leave the ark. God spoke to Noah, saying, come out of the ark together with your wife, your sons, and your sons' wives. Bring out with you every living thing of all flesh that is with you, birds, animals, and everything that creeps on earth, and let them swarm on the earth and be fertile and increase on earth. So Noah came out together with his sons, his wife, and his sons' wives. So God told him to go into the ark. God told him to come out of the ark. And did some, there were some testing before that, but not until, not until God said, go out of the ark, did they go out of the ark. So so now the before I go on to the midrash, any questions or comments about this before we go on?
I have a question. It's Howie.
Yes, Howie.
Would you mind, I know maybe it's going off your path a little bit. What are the, in a quick, quickie, short version, what are the various traditional explanations for the different timeframes there?
Ah, so that's a legitimate question, which I cannot answer. I haven't checked the other sources about this, what commentary says about the fits and starts here. But I'd have to get back to you on that one. I'm sorry. So I think the, what I'm, what I'm sharing with you is what the teacher shared with us rabbis a month ago, just for her perspective on teaching this story from a, with the eyes of what we are going through from 2020 until 2022 and dealing with COVID and how stark it is that just as we think, you know, our impression of the flood story is rain stops, ark on Mount Ararat, water dries a little bit, and then they're able to leave the ark. Reading the details of the story, understand that it looks like it's time to go out, can't go out yet. Looks like it's time, can't go out yet. Looks like it's time, can't go out yet. These, so this just how, by looking at these details, how similar it is to what we're going through in our lives today. So it's that perspective. And then we're going to, we're going to see in a moment after this traditional midrash, a very unusual midrash about this, about this story. So this traditional midrash, this is from Genesis Rabbah. So it's, it's one of the collections of midrash. Midrash for the sake of teaching a homiletical lesson, a values-based lesson, as opposed to midrash to teach Jewish law. So there's collections of midrash about Jewish law, which is midrash halacha. And then there are collections of midrash about Jewish values, which is midrash agada. So this is one of the classic collections of midrash agada, known as Genesis Rabbah, from the land of Israel, from the 700s or 800s, something like that. Scholars think that that's when Genesis Rabbah, and also Exodus, Leviticus, Numbers, Deuteronomy Rabbah. They have all those rabbis. And plus in a couple of other books of the Torah as well. I'm just reading something in the chat. So Steve, Steve just texted me privately in the chat about the raven. Hold that thought about the raven, Steve, because the next midrash after this one is going to highlight something about the raven and the dove. And you'll see some thoughts about that. Okay. So here's a thought about Noah leaving the ark from Genesis Rabbah. Another opinion. To everything, there is a season and a time to every purpose. Right, the classic, you know, we know the song from the 60s. To every season, turn, turn, turn. Right, based on Ecclesiastes, and a time for every purpose. There was a time for Noah. So what was, what's a time for everything and a time for every purpose? What are some examples from the Bible that prove this verse from Ecclesiastes, that there is a set time for everything? So there was a time for Noah to enter the ark, as it is written. Come you and all your house into the ark. Genesis, chapter 7, 1. So that's when God commanded Noah and his family to go into the ark, and a time for him to leave, go forth from the ark, which we just read in chapter eight. So in other words, the time to go in was set by God. The time to leave was set by God. And for Ecclesiastes, these, these times are determined by God. But Noah, so now what's Noah's, so the midrash goes on. How do we respond to these set times? But Noah did not accept the order to go out, saying, right? It doesn't say that Noah is arguing here. God spoke to Noah, saying, come out of the ark together with your wife. And so Noah came out together with his sons, his wife, and his sons' wives. There's no discussion between Noah and God. The midrash adds that there was discussion. Noah did not accept the order to go out, saying, am I to go out and be fruitful and multiply for a curse? Meaning, I think, why should I be fruitful and multiply if the potential will be for another destruction like this? What's the point of going out of the ark just for a potential of there to be more discussion? So until the Holy One swore to him that the, that the Holy One would not bring another flood upon the world, as it says, for this is the waters of Noah to me, for as I have sworn that the waters of Noah should no more go over the earth. So we need the verse from Isaiah, from the section which happens to be the Haftorah for the portion of Noah. So when we read Noah on Shabbat, right, when it's that time of year, when we're at that portion of Noah, the Haftorah for that, for that Shabbat is taken from Isaiah 54. And this promise, only until God made the promise to Noah that there would never be such a devastating flood again, would Noah agree to leave the ark. So the midrash here adds the, a response of Noah to this devastation, a spiritual, personal response to having dealt with, not just being cooped up with all these animals for such a long time, but having to deal with surviving devastation and witnessing the death, the horrific death and annihilation of every single other living being in the world at the time. So the rabbis add what is just a logical interpretation to the story, which the story itself leaves out. Right, how, and you know, there are so many moments in history of devastation, of human-caused devastation to other humans in war, massacres, annihilations, Holocaust, et cetera. And there are other instances of natural causes of devastation and annihilation, of hurricanes, volcanoes, et cetera. And what is the human response to those moments of tragedy? So the rabbis create this, this moment. I understand Noah's saying that the flood is over, but I'm afraid to leave this ark. I'm safe here, but yes, I'm safe, but I'm frightened to death. What's going to await me when I walk out of the ark? Am I going to get COVID if I'm walking out of my house? Is this devastation that is all around me going to affect me now? Am I going to die leaving the ark? Or have a kind of reaction that Noah could be having? And God has to placate Noah, comfort Noah. Don't worry, I will take care of you. So that's one, one reaction that the rabbis have to that, that in interesting interpretation to put this, this response of Noah to the devastation around him. And now there's this fascinating one. I ordered the book, this book, Dear Shuni, which will be published the end of this month. But this Rabbi Avi Strausberg has studied with this person, Tamar Biala. So she got an advanced copy of this fascinating midrash. So this is modern midrash, written by this Tamar Biala and other people in this new collection of modern midrash called Dear Shuni, meaning explicate me, interpret me. And it's written in Hebrew, but translated into English by Yehuda Mersky. So I'm looking forward to getting, Amazon tells me it will be delivered the end of June, these modern midrashin. So this modern midrash is about the birds in the story. So I want to share this, which also reflects a sense of how do we respond to the devastation around us? Okay? A question was asked in the midrash of the birds of the sky. So the, I just want to comment just on this line. This, this might seem odd, a fantasy. But we should just understand that in rabbinic midrash, which is the model for this collection of midrash, in rabbinic midrash, it's not unusual for the rabbis to have birds, animals, trees talking, or dead people coming back to life to talk and to teach lessons to the rabbis and thereby to the community as well. No, it's not from conservative Judaism. It's from Israel. And until I get the book, because Rabbi Strausberg didn't explain who Tamar Biala was and what her background is, but it's not from the conservative movement. So what the background is, I'm not sure. But it's not, it's definitely not conservative. So the model of trees, inanimate objects, animals, birds, fish, talking is not unusual. So the idea here, the premise here is that the birds in the sky have their own bait midrash also. Their rabbinic academy, where they're studying faith issues as well. So a question was asked in the midrash of the birds of the sky. The raven and the dove, which Noah, and the line under the H is just an academic way of, in English translation, to tell us that that H should be a chet. Okay? So the raven and the dove, which Noah sent out from the window, whatever became of them? Okay, right? The raven goes out, the one time that Noah sends the raven out, doesn't come back. The first time he sends the dove out, the dove comes back. The second time Noah sends him out, the dove comes back with an olive branch. Third time Noah sends the dove out, dove doesn't come back. Okay, so the two birds, what became of them? That's a legitimate question to ask. And if you're creative enough, perhaps you can teach an interesting lesson from that. So that's, that's what that is. What happened to the raven? What happened to the dove? Okay, Tamar Biala creating this story. After all, of the raven it is written, it went off, going off and returning until the waters were dried up from upon the earth. But it doesn't say what became of him. As for the dove, it is written, so she returned to him and unto the ark, for there was water upon the face of all the earth. And later on, it said, but she returned to him again no more. And doesn't say where she went or what became of her. Calling the dove a her, because in Hebrew, yonah is a feminine word. And the, the raven is a him, because it's a masculine word, just gender-based language of Hebrew. So we're not sure that the dove really was a female dove, but by the purpose of the story, it's just the way, the way it goes. They sent the high-flying eagle, who can bear another bird on his wings, to fetch them. Okay, so the birds of the sky say, what happened to the raven and the dove from that story? Let's send the eagle, the most, the most powerful bird, the highest-flying bird that we know can carry other birds on its back. They've seen, rabbis have seen how the fledglings of the eagle are sometimes put on the eagle's back, and the eagle can fly with its baby birds on its back. So, and no other bird flies higher than the eagle. And you know, the phrase having an eagle eye is based on the idea that the eagle, if any bird can find what happened to the raven and the dove, it would be the eagle. The eagle flew away for a day and another, and then returned with the dove and her entire family, since from the moment she found a home, up until that very day, she had been birthing and caretaking, breeding a multitude of sons and daughters. But he did not return with the raven. So the eagle found the dove, the dove from the Noah story, but the eagle could not find the raven. They asked him, that is, the birds in the midrash, asked the eagle, that raven, could you find him? He said, I found him flying here and there at the ends of the earth, and he refused to come with me. He said, ever since the day, he, the raven, said, ever since the day that Noah sent me out, I haven't stood arrested. And if I didn't return to him, how can I return with you? So the dove has been, has a family. She had been birthing and caretaking, breeding a multitude of sons and daughters. And the eagle was able to bring the dove back. The raven, what's the raven doing? Raven's still flying around. I haven't stood arrested, and if I didn't return to him, how can I return with you? I, I just, I, I can't, I can't come back. I have to keep on flying. Long, I answered, that is, the eagle says to the raven, Noah has long since died, and neither his children nor their children are still on the earth, and nobody is still waiting for you. He said, died and passed on the earth, and I didn't know? His head drooped earthward. Once he raised it, he concluded, I won't join all of you and won't stop flying until the shekhina, that is another word for God's presence, tells me to. For the earth is defiled, and of the shekhina it is written that she dwells among the impure with their defilement. I'm not coming until God says I can come with you. Until that, I'm still flying around. They voted and decided to go and find the shekhina and bring her the raven, so that he may cease from his flight. They feel bad for this raven flying around all the time, constantly. 3,000 years, still flying because of, for some reason. We'll find out soon. But they go looking for the shekhina. The birds of the sky asked the luminaries, where is the place of the shekhina? And they didn't answer. They asked the beasts of the field and the fish of the sea, and they didn't answer. They asked the trees and the grasses, and even they didn't know. At that time, when they were looking to one another and seeking At that time, when they were looking to one another and seeking answers from one another, they heard the shekhina calling to them. 'I am here among you, for you are occupied with Torah, and I am listening and growing with you.' She revealed herself to them in the image of a very large stork." You're going to be revealing yourself to an academy of birds. Reveal yourself as another bird. So, the shekhina takes the form of a very large stork. And that, also, that, just interesting for this Tamar Biala, the author of this midrash, is using other phrases from other midrash, classic midrash, and from the Bible in, in teaching the story too. The shekhina is here, here among you, studying Torah too, and here I am in the form of a stork. "The eagle went and brought the raven, who was well on in years, his wings dry and gray, limping in flight. The dwellers of the bait midrash said to him, 'Why do you fly back and forth and find no rest? He said, 'Where should I stand and where should I rest my wings? Anywhere I try to stand, the dead eyes of my brothers and sisters are staring at me. And anywhere I try to sit, the earth stirs and groans, and the weeping voice of my brother's blood rises upward from it.'" They answered, "But the dove found land on which grass grows and took an olive branch in its mouth, and then went and blossomed and sought out a new life. And she is still giving birth even now. And it is written, 'The waters left firm ground upon the earth, and the earth is waiting for you and those like you for thousands of years now to come back.'" He answered them, "Even if the waters have left firm ground upon the earth, I cannot dwell on it, for it says, 'The face of the soil was charev,' destroyed. And a place that has no face, its tears cannot be wiped away, or its disgrace.'" "At that moment, the sun began to set, and the sky seemed to them as red as blood. The inhabitants of the bait midrash looked at the dove and saw that she was tired and weeping. They looked at the raven and saw that he was losing his mind. They looked to the shekhina and saw that she was spreading her wings, and they were large, and a warming wind rose, arose from them. The shekhina arose from her place and went over to the dove and the raven and sheltered them with her wings. The raven ceased his flight; the dove's soul was rested. And some say that at that moment, one could hear the murmuring of the shekhina, who was saying to those birds who dwelled in the bait midrash, 'What do we know about the dove and the raven? We are not doves or ravens, and it wasn't we who were sent out from the window to go and look.'" So, just think that's very powerful about different responses to witnessing destruction. And sometimes, and the faith that it takes to carry on and produce new life in the face of destruction that the dove had, and the utter devastation to your very being that the raven has, to the point that it drove the raven crazy. Right? This constant flying around. How can I rest when my brothers and sisters, my fellow ravens and other creation has been annihilated? Whereas the dove says, "I have no choice but to go on with life and to produce new life." And to, to have the faith to do that. Until the dove hears what the raven has to say, and then the, the dove is devastated herself. So, it just, it's just, I think it's just a very powerful way to look at the story, just from the innocuous phrases in the Torah itself, that the raven and the dove never returned to the ark. What did that mean? And how does that mean for us today when we are dealing with the, not just COVID, but any kind of destruction that we see around us? You know, so, because there, there's, there are times, you know, just, just reading the news, understanding what's going on in the world around me, that I just want to, you know, find a hole and, or find a cave and just burrow myself away in the cave to escape the craziness and the chaos of the world around me. And it takes a lot of energy to say, you know, despite what's going on in the world, I'm going to pray to God today, and I'm going to go about my business to try to, to try to bring blessing to the world. It's harder and harder to do that with all of the craziness, the whole variety of, you know, war in Ukraine, the constant, constant gun massacres in this country. Just, just two of many, many examples, threats on our civil liberty, the people not talking to each other in a respectful way anymore, global warming, climate change, a whole variety of issues that are out there, rise of antisemitism, et cetera, et cetera, that it just, you know, you just are like the raven, just flying around, not being able to find a resting place, because how can you rest when things are like this in the world? But then, also, there are people who are like the dove, who say, you know, "I have faith. There are going to, there's got to be other people like me who believe in and have faith in good, and I'm going to do my best to create good, good beings and hope there are other good beings out there." So, I just, any, any other thoughts or comments about this?
How, how was it over in Israel as far as politics and stuff going on over there?
So, when I was in Israel, I wasn't really focused on that. I was focused on being there with my family and enjoying the wedding. So, I wasn't, I wasn't paying attention to that. Any, any thoughts or comments about this raven and the dove and this, and this midrash, and how we, how we deal with with our faith in, in the face of, of crisis?
Well, I have one question, which is, where is the personal responsibility? In, in, in other words, it seems like one, one, you know, one part of that story is completely frustrated, the other one is hopeful. But, you know, isn't really the, the only way we're going to see, you know, potential change or hope or is for us to do something?
Right. Well, I think the dove is doing something. The dove is doing something, and so, a dove can only do what the dove can, can do, and that is to, to breed. And so, perhaps the lesson is we have to do what human beings can do, which is more than just breed. We can make, we can make a difference. We can be voices for good. We can, we can create things. We can make things happen, more than other creatures can. So, I, I think perhaps that's what Tamar Biala is trying to say in this story. The, the dove can do only what doves can do to the best of its ability. And it keeps on doing it over and over again to make as much good as possible. And I think that, that human beings who have the capacity to do much more than just be fruitful and multiply have the responsibility to do, to do as much as we can.
I would argue, this is Howie again, I would argue that the raven also felt great weight of responsibility and did what he could do. And I think perhaps the midrash is telling us that both are necessary. After all, he waited and waited and waited to hear from the shekhina. That's, and the shekhina did show.
That's, so that's, that's an interesting, yes. I think that's also a commentary, you know, it's, it could be a commentary on the creation of the state of Israel. Right? You have ultra-orthodox at the time, before 1948, who are not Zionists at all. How can we be Zionists? We're waiting for God to tell us to bring the Messiah and to, and to tell us, lead us back to the promised land. Until then, we can't. We're just like circling the world, just waiting. We're just doing our thing, just waiting. Or are we the doves, perhaps the Zionists are the doves, saying, "We're not waiting for God to tell us what to do. We're just taking matters into our own hand, knowing what we should be doing." I mean, it's just one example, right? So, in other words, do we wait until God tells us what to do in order to do it? Or do we act on our own instead? And which is better? I, I don't know. I don't know which is better, because the dove realizes, not, it, it doesn't realize until he hears from the raven that there's another perspective and starts weeping. And perhaps, we don't know, the, the midrash doesn't say how the raven reacted to what the dove was doing. The raven only reacted to being in the presence of the shekhina. And that's all, that's all the raven needed, is some physical proof that God exists. And that, that was a comfort to the raven. And the, the dove didn't necessarily need that in order, the dove had faith, whether there was personal experience with the shekhina or not. So, you know, it's just, so I don't know. I think, absolutely, Howie, I agree. I think both perspectives here just reflect the idea that this is a very nuanced kind of approach to understanding how we, how we go on in the midst of devastation, and how, how our faith is, is affected by that. And it's not black and white. It's, it's kind of nuanced. We have to be able to understand that there are a whole, there are a variety of ways to respond to, to tragedy and crisis in life. And sometimes we, and, and I think sometimes we can go back and forth. In the midst of personal crisis, we can be like the raven. We're circling, we're lost. We have no idea what to do. We'll just circle until, until God can, 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 can come down and tell me what to do. Or the dove, who says, "Okay, I know what I need to do. I can't, I can't be like the raven. I can't circle. It's not, I can't, I can't live life like that. I have to, I have to move on. I have to try to move on."
Well, let's not forget the very end of the midrash also.
Yeah.
Nina took both of them on her wings.
That's right.
So, again, I think both are needed and both are approved by, so to speak, or comforted by the shekhina.
Right. And then the other birds, who weren't around at the time of Noah, only the raven and the dove were. The other birds are saying, "What do we know about the dove and the raven? We're not doves or ravens, and it wasn't we who were sent out from that window to go and look." How can we judge which one is the right approach?
Yeah.
We don't know. We don't know. Yeah, so I thought, I thought that was a pretty powerful midrash that I wanted to share with you.
Gosh, I agree.
So, yeah. So, I want to share in the chat, in case people want to keep on studying tonight. I want to put something in the chat. If you want to go to the conservative movement night of study, here in the chat is this link. So, if you click on that now, then your computer will take you there right away to this live stream of the conservative movement. So, if, if you wish to do that. So, I wish everybody a chag sameach. Again, services tomorrow morning at 9:30, tomorrow evening at 6:00, Monday morning at 9:30, Monday evening to end the holiday at 9:15. So, chag sameach, everybody.
Sameach, thanks.
Sameach, everyone.